Call to order. A regular monthly meeting of the Board of Trustees of the Village of Lake Barrington. It is Tuesday, April 3, 2018. I'll ask the clerk to please call and roll.
President Richardson.
Here.
Trustee Burke.
Here.
Trustee Mitchell. Trustee Perkins.
Here.
Trustee Rippey.
Here.
Trustee Schaller.
Here.
Trustee Thompson.
Yes.
Okay, would you all please rise and join me in the pledge allegiance to our flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, thank you. Agenda item four this evening is the approval of the minutes from our special committee of the whole meeting last month, March 6th, as well as our regular board meeting the last month, March 6th. Are there edits or questions or corrections for the clerk on minutes? There being none, Chair would like a motion to approve the minutes and further instruct the clerk to keep the record open for minutes of a technical or conforming nature for a period of five. May I have that motion? Trustee Schaller, thank you, may I have his second?
Second.
My trustee Rippey, thank you both. The last clerk to please call and roll.
Trustee Schaller.
Yes.
Trustee Rippey.
Yes.
Trustee Burke.
Yes.
Trustee Perkins.
Yes.
Trustee Thompson.
Yes.
President Richardson.
Yes, thank you. Under the President's remarks this evening, we have some, we have a presentation from our friends at Citizens for Conservation. Meredith Tucker and Ann Marie Lucas are here, and please come forward, and we welcome your presentation, and look forward to hearing from you.
Okay, we will keep this as brief as possible. Introductions really quick. We're both in Citizens for Conservation. I'm Ann Marie Lucas, this is Meredith Tucker. She's Director of Merit Act from CFC, and currently a consultant to CFC. Go.
Just wanted to point out, you invited us, and thank you so much for that. Usually, you know, we have to, you know, ask to come and speak, but it was very nice of you to show an interest in monarch butterflies. I understand we have a weigh station here. Can I, can you hear me if I'm in? No?
The reason is, it's taped, and so the system feeds into the.
Sorry, sorry. We understand we have a weigh station, and we think that's wonderful. Two things go together, the most important thing you can know, monarch butterflies and milkweed, and I think most people already know that. Monarch butterflies, the one you see flying, or the ones you see flying around your yard, they can take nectar from almost any kind of blooming plant. However, their babies can only eat milkweed. So, in the life cycle of the monarch, the adult female is flying around, she finds some milkweed, she lays an egg on the underside of the leaf. If you have some milkweed in your yard, if you look under the leaf, you might find one little egg there. The egg hatches, becomes a tiny little larva that you can hardly see at all. It gradually grows as it eats the milkweed, and you may see your milkweed leaves getting really, really ragged looking, and holes in them. Almost nothing else is going to eat milkweed because they're poisonous. That latex, that sap in them, the white sap, is poisonous to most insects. So, the baby larva can eat it. It then becomes a pupa, it makes a little hard shell that hangs from the leaf of a plant, and inside that little hard shell, it becomes the adult butterfly that eventually breaks out and flies away. So that's their complete life cycle. I think the other thing most of us know about milkweed, not milkweed, about monarchs, is that they migrate, that fragile, thin-winged insect migrates all the way from here to Mexico. The ones that you see, we see many generations of them during the summer, but the ones that you see late in the summer or early fall, the last ones you see are headed south, they're headed all the way to Mexico, and they do need to fuel up. So if you want to help the milkweed, you have lots of blooming plants that have nectar in, you know, in your garden, but they are hitting all the nectar on the way down there. Unfortunately, there's not a lot of that anymore. Remember when this was all prairie? There were loads of prairie plants, and the monarchs didn't have to look very far to find the nectar to sustain them, to take them to the Gulf and across the Gulf of Mexico to the Evergreen Forest, the one particular part of Mexico where they spend the winter. And sometimes, they used to be so heavy, there were so many hundreds of thousands of them hanging on the trees, that the branches would break, and the whole trees would come down. That's not the case now. You'll be lucky if you see a monarch or two in your yard. Their populations have been decimated for a couple of reasons. There's no habitat anymore, those prairies are gone, so they're trying to replace your yard, replaces some of their habitat. I understand you have a weigh station here, you probably have flowers there, and that's good, because you're going to help them find the nectar they need to sustain them. But one of the big things, years ago, the farmers would have rows and rows of corn and soybeans, but there'd be weeds between the rows, and the milkweed would grow between the rows. But now, we have GMO seeds, Roundup Ready corn, Roundup Ready soybeans. Farmers plant the soybeans, they plant the corn, and then they grinch everything in Roundup. And as a result, there's no more milkweed, and no more weeds with flowers in between the rows of the crops. So it behooves us to try to plant things, to plant the flowers that the butterflies can use. This is happening to all of them, it's not just the monarchs. I want to point out, one of the really most harmful things is the constant and ubiquitous use of neonicotinoids now. I left each of you, and you'll see up by your nameplate, I left you a little brochure that you can take home, read, pass along if you will, about neonicotinoids. These, they're, you can see the word nicotine in them. They are made from nicotine, and as a result, they don't have a whole lot of harm on mammals. Anybody who smoked for a long time, moi included, knows that, you know, it doesn't kill you right away to have nicotine in your system. That is the case with neonicotinoids. They don't harm mammals very much, but they are deadly to not just monarch butterflies, but also to our bees. And it's systemic, so that every part of the plant becomes poisonous. The nectar, the pollen, the leaves, anything that chewed on a leaf is likely to be impacted. Why would I bother telling you this? Because almost every plant you go into a, into a garden center has been pre-treated. I have, Ann Marie and I gave a program a couple of years ago for Little Garden Club, and it was in a home, and we were in there talking about, just got off the subject of neonicotinoids, and the homeowner went in her garage and came back with an armload of chemicals, hadn't had a clue, that were neonicotinoids. And we don't know what we're putting on our plants sometimes, and I urge you, don't buy pre-treated plants, especially, oh, sorry, especially the hanging baskets are almost certainly pre-treated. So that there's a hanging basket with a lovely red tube-shaped flower for hummingbirds, you're not doing the hummingbirds any good. I'm not saying you're going to kill them by using a pre-treated plant, but eventually, if they go through enough of these pre-treated plants, they have, lose the ability to fly, they're not finding the little bugs they find in there. There are also always consequences. So we would ask you to please, the St. Little Garden Club, by the way, went to Knupfer's in Palatine the other day, as they have every day for several years, and they had almost no pre-treated plants. They called all of their suppliers and their growers, and only one was still pre-treating. So it goes to show, people make a difference if you speak up and say, "I'm not buying this because it's pre-treated," they're not as likely to supply that product next year. I think we can all be helpful if we speak up and say, "We want things that are organic, that are not covered in pesticides." My very end, I just want to say, I would like you, I was talking with one of your trustees who are bird watchers, and in the yards right now, there are lots of red-winged blackbirds and birds coming up from the south. There are almost no grackles, and I did a little research. The grackles are eating those pre-treated seeds that have been pre-treated by neonicotinoids, and they're dying. Four seeds that didn't get drilled enough into the ground can kill a grackle. So speak up, tell people you don't want to see all these pre-treated items, and for you, plant milkweed. CFC happens to have a plant sale coming up, and we got rid of every supplier that used neonicotinoids on their, on their plants. So you can plant our, I think we have four or five different kinds of milkweed, some of them quite beautiful, and they're, none of them pre-treated. Please plant nectar flowers, beautiful flowers that, that the butterflies and the bees can actually use for nectar and pollen. And finally, please be careful and don't use insecticides. There's a reason for those insects to be here. Thank you. Are there any questions?
I'm happy to recognize the trustees for comments or questions, and I'll begin on my left, Trustee Thompson, with ready comments or questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I don't really have any questions, I just would want to thank you for all you're doing.
Oh.
Because it's very, I mean, it's very important to environment to do things the right way.
Thank you.
And without you helping us, I don't think, I think we have some problems, so thank you.
I'll give myself, not myself, but our CFC a little plug. The main thing I do for CFC is to run a program called Habitat Corridors. If you contact us, we'll come to your home for an hour, walk your property, and make suggestions for what native plants might do nicely, a native tree, and for earth-friendly maintenance practices.
Terrific.
So call free, too, just call CFC.
I like the word "free," thank you.
That's what we do, we're volunteers.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Trustee Burke.
Well, it's great that you crashed our party. Oh, wait, no, you were invited, I'm sorry. It's great that you were invited, we had a nice conversation prior to this, and it's interesting because I've had so much on my mind, the work that's going on in the forest preserve, and we talked about that behind my neighborhood, where they're clearing the buckthorn, and doing all this habitat restoration, and it's just incredible. We're very, very fortunate to have friends in the forest preserve, CFC, and all these different organizations here, because we have, this is a big part of our brain, what we do here, this is a big part of what we espouse, open space, right? Where we have all these amenities, but we really have places where people can enjoy being out in nature. And what you do to preserve, protect, augment, that is remarkable, and it's, it's kind of quiet in the behind the scenes, but those of us who are paying attention know that that work's going on, we appreciate that.
I noticed today, because I've been doing these home visits for many years, I would say the vast majority of them are in Lake Barrington. So people around here are getting, getting the message, and that's a good thing.
That's nice to know. So if somebody wants that consultation, they can just call CFC, or do they call you specifically?
No, I prefer, they call CFC and just say, "We would like a home visit," and they will contact me. They can leave a phone number, or they can leave an email address, and I'll get in touch with them.
And does that also include that you would recognize or point out if there were invasive plants and other things like buckthorn and?
Absolutely.
Alternatives to buckthorn?
All, yes, yes, Viburnum punifoli, and Black paw Viburnum, it's a great plant to put in the stepbook.
Did you, did you?
I just wanted to say, we have a website called HabitatCorridors.org.
Okay.
That has all this information, and you can send an email to info@habitatcorridors.org in case you don't want to make the phone call.
And she'll get the email and pass it up.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you, you're a nice child.
No, obviously, thank you very, very much for bringing this to our attention. I'm going to, occasionally, I see monarch butterfly now, but not like you, not like you used to, but it's interesting how they survive and what is needed. Are there, are there insecticides that would have this terminology on it? So if you were to check the insecticide, how you can help with some of, which I would try to pronounce, but I'm not even trying, some of the, the things are, insecticides, would it be on the label of something we should do?
I think you should be able to ask the person at the store if any of these are neonicotinoids. There are, there's amidoclobrid, and there are all different kinds, and I used to carry a chart that's got a lot of the names, but they're changing every year, there are new ones being produced, and I think, try to find a trustworthy garden center or supplier, or if you look in a jar and you see that chemical on there, boy, I tell you, Google is great. You'll find out.
And find out what is or not.
Yes, for sure.
And one of the, I'm not living like very good shores, obviously, they're working in a lot of natural areas within the shores, so I would think, have you ever made a presentation to a group there?
I have not, but I know Wes Wolf and Carol Holden.
They do a lot of work, right, and they're all as far as education.
They have invited me for a presentation, but all you have to do is tell CFC you'd like one, and then I will set up.
I'll pass the word along and be sure, because I think it'd be very interesting and valuable. Thank you.
We have lots of different programs that we give, trees and shrubs, or flowering plants, or maintenance practices, all different programs, and they're all done with, with photos from our own yards to prove we really can grow these things around here, so.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Trustee Perkins.
Yes, I am fantastic at growing weeds.
Ah.
Out of this world. So, no, I definitely will have you, I will call and set up a program for you to come out to my home, and, because, I mean, if it's good to grow the weeds, then I want some good-looking weeds.
And a really quick thing. And cut your weeds.
And then I don't have to weed.
Cut your weeds, cover it with three or four or five layers of newspaper, put some wood chips on it, forget it for six months. The weeds will be gone, you can plant right through that newspaper.
Perfect.
You didn't have to use any chemicals to kill the weeds.
Yeah.
There are ways to do it.
Yeah, we, we have, my daughter and I have grown butterflies, the monarch butterflies.
Oh, sure, sure.
We, you know, ordered them, I don't know how good this is, but we order them from Amazon, and they come to our, to our door, and we set up, we've grown 15 to 20 butterflies over the past three years. So, and it's, it's amazing, it's so, she loves it, I love it, it's, you know, when they come out and we set them free, it's just, you know, and then, you know, the next year we see a butterfly, and she says.
There he is.
There's him.
But, yeah, nothing else, you, oh my goodness, you're getting her inspired and getting her interested in nature, and she's not watching TV, you're doing a video game, she's out there. That is wonderful.
Yeah, would you be interested in talking to a grasshopper?
I don't, if they're not too young, I mean.
Okay, yeah.
They'd have to be, most of my programs are adult level.
Sure.
If we had the right subject, I might not have all the pictures, though.
Sure.
We'll see. Feel free to contact.
I'll talk with you when I, when you come out.
Okay, yeah, very good.
I would enjoy that. Thank you so much, this was very informative, and I think a lot of people don't realize.
Of course, people don't know. And most people, when they do know, they want to do the right thing.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you.
Trustee Rippey.
Thank you for a great, talk to the opening presentation here. The question I have is mosquito spraying, does that affect the bees and the monarch butterflies?
Oh, we were just having this discussion. Clark used to spray my neighbor's house, and they said, "Yeah, we'd be lying to you if we told you that this didn't affect the other insects." This was from Clark, and I called them because I am proactive, and I've talked to them about it, they admit that it does kill other insects. On the other hand, there are people who say, "Oh, no, no, it only kills things mosquito size or smaller." Hmm, probably not. I do think larvicide is a good thing, that, where they spray early in the spring, just spray standing water, I think that's good. I think we need to be not quite so comfortable, and maybe put up with a few mosquitoes, and, oh, think of all the swallows that'll be happy to eat them. I don't know if I answered your questions, I do think that the sprays do kill other things, according to Clark.
Okay, thank you.
And thank you.
Let me give you another plug here.
Okay.
I'm looking at the calendar because Ms. Dotline was very good about writing this down. Saturday, May 5th, and Sunday, May 6th is the CFC Plant Sale at their headquarters on Route 22, across from Good Shepherd Hospital.
At the hospital.
At the hospital, excuse me, at the hospital, thank you, on the hospital property.
Yes.
What time is it?
Nine till three, I believe, but you can preorder now, online, you can preorder until April 22nd, in which case, your order will be all ready for you, and you could come in the Friday before that weekend, I mean, so what would that be, the 4th or something? But yes, it's, our sale has gotten so big, oh, it's been so successful, because we don't overprice our plants, we want people to use them. It's actually in the barn and all the surrounding area, around the barn over at the Good Shepherd.
We have some planted in our backyard over the years.
Wonderful.
And the, yeah, the only pest my wife was interested in getting rid of is the one she married, but that's not a problem for she and the neonicotinoids, so.
And if you want to order trees or shrubs, they have to be ordered in advance, but everything else is available the weekend of the, of the sale, and thank you for the.
We're grateful for your time.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Okay, we can move to Agenda Item 6 this evening, which is the first opportunity in the agenda for the public to address the board on non-agenda items. Anybody seeking recognition for that purpose? And I see Deputy Stankowitz in the back from Lake County Sheriff. I testify on behalf of the Lake County Sheriff's Office, this will be part of my report later, but it was a delight, I got to give you quite a nice plug.
That was great, I got an email.
I hope the other sheriff told you the.
They sent me emails, and I, you all.
Good. Well, you, you've earned it, I'll never forget, you helped that young man who was driving with his father's car with his first driver's license, and he, that deer ran into the car and stopped, and you helped him, you couldn't have been nicer, I, I was very generous there.
Thank you.
So, that's, that's part of my report a little ahead of time. We can move to the consent agenda, and I want to thank the administrator for creating this and creating the committee of the whole process ahead of time, where a number of issues can be vetted by the board in an efficient manner, so that we can use this time most efficiently as well. Are there, are there any questions on any of the agenda items? I'll read them one at a time briefly by headline, and then if we have any further questions or points we want to raise, we can, otherwise, we will move to consider them in block, as we have done in the past. 7A is consideration of a resolution approving and authorizing publication of the official 2018 zoning map for the Village of Lake Barrington. 7B is consideration of an ordinance amending the Village of Lake Barrington Village Code, Chapter 10, quote, "Fees and deposits," quote, Title 1, and administration, quote, in Chapters 3, quote, "sewers," quote, of Title 13, quote, "waters and sewer," "water and sewers," close quote. 7C, building assessment study relative to the need for this building, Village Hall, as to possible capital repairs. 7D, economic development consulting services, I see Ms. Kathleen Scott in the audience. 7E, consideration of a resolution to approve a temporary use permit for special events, farmer's market and Angel Water.
Uh, Mr. President, excuse me, Mr. Andrew Wilson, the president of the Angel Soft Water is here tonight, and perhaps you might want to say a word or two about the farmer's market.
Before I call, before I call the question, I'll be happy to recognize him for that. 7F, iron removal filter tank painting request for bids. 7G, water tower inspection services. 7H, 2018 road maintenance program, MFT funds, Savannah Trail. 7I, consideration of a resolution to approve a temporary use permit for a special event, Pepper Park and Friends Spring Market on May 5, 2018, from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. And so those are the items for consideration and block under the consent agenda, and I'm happy to recognize Mr. Wilson at this time.
Hi, guys.
Nice to see you all, guys.
Most of you are still the same. Yeah, I guess we've, you know, we're hopeful that you guys approve it, because it would be to have it on a little more busy street, plus I have a whole staff that's set up promoting the program, promoting the program, so we're going to contact the old, the old people that were there before, and then we are going to, we've also applied for a sign, so that as people drive down 14 that might be, might want to become a vendor, we'll have that sign out months prior to, to the event. So we're trying to be very active, you know, plus our staff is in homes and businesses all over the Chicago line area, so we're going to bring it up when we're out. So hopefully you guys want to vote on, vote on it, and come on down if you do, so. Are there any questions you might have?
No, I'm just grateful that, obviously, last year, we, we moved it from, from the Pepper Park area up to the marketplace, and while it was successful, unfortunately, we just couldn't get the cooperation of the marketplace owner to have it, and so I appreciate so very, very much that you will take that momentum, and I think even build upon it, because the traffic on North West Highway is greater than it even is on 59 and Kelsey, and the facility that you have, I went there a couple times last year, when it rained, and we had all our vendors out in the field, and while we were able to hold all of it most of the time, it was a problem, there's obviously a huge parking lot, parking is no problem, and just appreciate the fact that you've stepped forward, and hopefully it'll be a little better than it has been in the past, and.
Yeah, I hope so, I mean, we have the big warehouse, too, that we can bring people inside, kitchen there, as you guys probably know, bathrooms, so it's, hopefully it will play out well. We have already people asking if we can throw a car show at the same time, and, you know, a lot of band, I'm like, relax, let's, one thing at a time, but hopefully we can make it a fun event. I hope to work with Pepper Park Coffee to have them show up, because I think to serve drinks and stuff out there would be wonderful, so hopefully we'll, we'll see all that happen.
Yeah, I appreciate your, your step forward, I know Trustee Thompson has played an integral role in, in making that happen as well, so.
Yeah, he haunted me. He's a smart. Absolutely, he's a smart.
He's going to be there every week to buy as much as I did last year.
No, I'm teasing, teasing, great, yeah, as you know, I wanted to do it before.
I know, yeah.
Hi, guys, thanks again. Thank you.
Thank you.
And, and would you like to add a question?
Yes. Kathleen, would you?
I'm so sorry.
That's okay, so would you like to just, for you to come up and see if there's anything you'd like to say to the board, or see if the board has any questions for you? That's what we're doing, so, proposing to your contract.
Okay, well, I'm Kathleen Scott, and Scott Partners, and we work with businesses and with villages, and do economic and business development. I'm really excited at the opportunity to hopefully work again with the Village of Lake Barrington, and to help be a part of crafting an economic development plan, which, as a person who's developing businesses here, I'm even more excited about, and so I think this is a great opportunity, and it's very forward-thinking, and I'm excited about that. We've had a lot of success in all the businesses we've opened here so far, and we hope to continue that, and I hope to be a part of helping the village grow and become more viable for more businesses. Do you have questions for me?
I feel a question I have, and I mentioned it to Andy when he, he called me and talked about the concept, I think the concept is great, number one, and I think you'd perfectly be part of that concept. The only concern I have, I've been in sales most of my life, a couple of brothers, trustees have been in sales, and I just encourage, and maybe it's not practical, but I just encourage, the arrangement should be more based, should be somewhat based, based in an incentive for success, and currently, it's not written that way, so, I mean, I, I approve of you, I approve of what we're doing, I just don't approve of the arrangement, so I just want you to understand why I feel that way, as I said, all the sales I've ever been in, it's always been a base plus commission, a base versus commission, there's some incentive, and, and I just think it's important for this whole process to work even better, for you to be rewarded on the success that you bring to the village. That's, that's just my, my opinion.
and we really sat and we talked about, there's a couple reasons why we chose not to include it. One is, the nature of economic development is, it's not, it's not like regular real estate of selling a home, it's, it's not a short-term proposition, it's really a long-term proposition, so we could get lucky and find somebody in a month, or we could be searching for months and months or up to a year, so honestly, I couldn't think of a fair way to incent for, for what you might call successfully attracting businesses to the village. The second part of it is, there's a lot more to this, particularly as it relates to improving our own internal processes, so from a consulting contract, this is a very holistic approach, so I don't want people sitting up here thinking that it's one-dimensional, that the only goal is to attract a new business and land a new business that's going to generate tax revenue, so that's why, to me, the incentive part doesn't add up for me. And what I mean by that is, it's multi-layered, multifaceted, we'll be working on internal processes with Karen Dalton Lane on how we service our existing customers, we're going to be looking at everything from business license streamlining to building a business directory, to revisiting our economic incentive programs and matching grant programs, so it's, it's holistic, it's also helping current businesses grow and thrive and finding complementary businesses. So when we add it all up, I'm looking at it from the standpoint of, and here's a key thing, John, we have to look at it month to month and ask the question, is there value in what we're, are we receiving value in what we're paying, and I think we always have the right to either adjust the, the, you know, from us, the value equation if we don't see it. And that's really my commitment to you, is that we'll be monitoring this very closely, and I, I've had enough conversation with Ms. Scott to know that if we're not adding any value, if she's not adding any value, we're just going to reconsider the whole arrangement, and whether that's paying less for the arrangement or just disconnecting from the arrangement. And we're going to be reporting to you monthly, and we're going to be reporting quarterly, so I would just say that, let's monitor this and see if, it's my belief that we're going to walk away from this believing that there's tremendous value in what we're doing here, but we won't know until we get underway. So your comments, as I've said all along, I wasn't being dismissive, but I was understanding where you were coming from, I just practically, we couldn't find a way to implement that in a fair way, that makes sense for this contract.
And that being said, you stick it here, neck out, I guess.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's attractive to some people, for my neck.
And it wasn't on the real estate, it wasn't on the sales.
No, I didn't mean that, in fact, I don't, I probably should have said this, I don't really view this as a sales position, maybe that's a better way to say it, I don't think we're selling, in that context, I think that we are rewarding successfully. Right, and, and particularly the internal process work that we're doing.
Well, that part I understand, yeah.
And which is a good part of it, so, there's an element of sales, I would agree, but it's not, it's not a full sales program.
Oh, I know that, yeah.
And other questions for Kathleen?
What are you most excited about, what do you think our strengths are? What's the value proposition that you think is appealing?
In Lake Barrington for businesses, and I can speak on this as, as someone who has local businesses, and I would say it's the support systems. Not only do you, as, as government, support the businesses, but many, many of the residents and other businesses support each other, the residents come and, and support local businesses, we're very, very strong on our buy local and we source local, and I think that the cohesiveness of having that, of having that internal support structure, where, I mean, I'm sure if a business were providing unacceptable service, at some point, you know, people, customers would have to say, gosh, this isn't working, but I think as long as you bring something to the table as a business, this village is going to support you, and I think it's the opportunity to be groundbreaking, we're not saturated, so many villages are saturated with, you know, 15 coffee shops and 10 fast food restaurants and 30 banks, and we're not, we're not saturated, we're, there's a lot of opportunity, and I think that, to me, those are the things that excite me, and when I talk about Lake Barrington as a place to, for other people who bring a business to open a business, when I work with Alex at, at Lake Barrington Commons, I mean, it's, it's easy to be enthusiastic about the village, and I think that, that makes my job easier.
Sure, I appreciate that, because we certainly want continually to be put up on our road, and we look forward to your comments.
Thank you.
Okay, Lisa, I'll ask the clerk, just from an administrative perspective right now, so we'll make the motion in block. Under 7A, it's resolution number...
Four.
Four, under 7B, it's ordinance number...
Six.
Under 7D, it's resolution number...
Five.
Under 7E, it's resolution number...
Six.
And under, number I, 7I, it's resolution number...
Seven.
Seven, thank you. Pursuant to those amendments provided by the clerk, Chair would like a motion to consider it a block. By our vote, it is voted, the consent agenda, Agenda Item 7A through 7I is previously described by the Chair, may I have that motion? So moved by Trustee Thompson, may I please have a second? By Trustee Burke, thank you both, and the clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Thompson?
Yes.
Trustee Burke?
Yes.
Trustee Perkins?
Yes.
Trustee Rigby?
Aye.
Trustee Schaller?
Yes.
President Richardson?
Yes, thank you very much. Agenda Item 8, the Treasurer's Report, I'll ask our Treasurer to come forward, Mrs. Hirsch.
Hello. Hello. So, before tonight, we are reviewing the financial statements for the 10 months ended February 28, 2018. We're 83% for our fiscal year, so we're getting there, two more months to go. And we'll start by looking at page 2 of the flash report. We'll see we have assets of $2,284,000. We have current liabilities of $863,000, and equated $1,421,000. So our liabilities, our equities, equal our assets at $2,284,000. Fiscal year-to-date revenues for the 10 months are $2,152,000. Our expenses are at $1,980,000, resulting in a net income of $172,000. And so as you'll see below, we do break out, we have operations from what we call our extraordinary one-time planned items, to give us our regular operations and net income loss. For the 10 months ended February 28, 2018, we're at $191,000, compared to last year at $83,000. This is the first month that I've actually, I've really been paying attention, but that number is right in the last year, so we've turned the corner. We've, you know, this is, this month last year, February 2017, we had a number of one-time separation, large expenses, that now we're sort of comparing apples to apples. So from a regular operations standpoint, we're actually doing stronger than we were this point last year, so that's good news. And for the fiscal year 2018, we're actually forecasting a net income, a net income of about $148,000, which is almost $100,000 under the budget. And that's really, the difference is largely due to savings and some expenses, revenues are about the same as budgeted, but coming in under budget, where our other consultant figures are running ditch projects, salt, some brands, and payroll, a little bit lower than budgeted, so that's all coming in about $100,000 less than we anticipated. Okay, so flip forward to pages 10 and 11, compare the actual to the budget report for Jomo Fund. And on page 10, the seasonal revenues are 85% actual to budget, which is ahead of 73%, which is 80%, which is where we are in the year, so we're, we're on track there. Income tax and sales tax are still our biggest underperformers, earliest sales tax returns for Speedway, Sheller, slightly under budgeted numbers, but we're anxiously waiting for the summer months to see if we catch up there. On the expense side, page 11, you'll see we're at 79% actual budget, our total expenditures. And this is where we're performing strongly, as I mentioned, we're under budget for, on the expense side, and that's mostly the non-MFT road maintenance, salt usage is about capital with budget, and that's helping to keep this actual percentage down a little bit. Any questions on that Jomo Fund?
Didn't they, I saw something where the state is now collecting more, or taking a percent out of what they pay us?
That's, that's just the home roll sales tax. So if we had a home roll sales tax, it would be taken a portion of that, but we do not have a home roll sales tax.
Okay, thank you.
But they're, they're actually, they got a budget on that, from what I've been reading as well. So IML is out, the Illman Misole Lake is really on top of protesting that right now. So page 12, we'll put in the motorfield tax fund. And we have cash available of $284,000, that's our current assets, those are our current liabilities, in fact, we have no more current liabilities, this is the first month that we've been carrying a payable to, for IDOT for the, what was that, it was the Woodland Bridge, it's been on there since I started working here, almost five years ago, and that is finally off the books, so that's how long it took IDOT to clear that up, which is pretty amazing.
It's par for the course.
Is it? Okay, so we weren't special?
No, we were not special.
I considered that, are you sure, are you sure? And finally, we got the final bill and paid it off, and we're done. And we've just passed a one-budget earlier, and that's $240,000, roughly $240,000, there's plenty of money, as we talked earlier, in the, in the fund to cover that expense. Okay, so page 20 is Open Space Fund. Once again, we're in a little activity going on in there, this month at least, from a financial perspective, $132,000 in cash for ongoing maintenance, $104,000 in the bond account, strictly going to pay interest and principal on the bonds, there's a principal interest payment coming up in April, April 15, those are due, so that'll, that'll be drained a little bit. There was a little activity in this account, there was a little bit of legal expense regarding open space activity, and that's pretty much all, you have any comments or questions on the financial course?
Has the CFC purchased a property going into the open space?
Not yet, don't think so.
Okay.
The documents are prepared and off to the attorney?
Any idea of timing, Mike?
I do not.
What did you say, Joe?
The, the documents have been prepared, they've been sent to the attorney, and so as soon as he blesses them, we'll be, we can go.
Okay. Okay, and the accounts payable, the warrant's been reviewed, and they're in order and they're for your approval, there's just one this month that's a little bit out of the ordinary, Lake County Partners, for $1,035, that is a budgeted item amount, because I just have it called your attention, since it's not a normal recurring expenditure.
We will shortly hear a budget presentation summary from the Administrator, but I want to acknowledge publicly what I said earlier in the other room, which is, our financial statements generally, and our budget process more particularly, are just remarkably first-rate.
I think we have mostly debated, I think, for that.
I want to thank the village accountant, as well as the Treasurer and the Administrator, because I give, I give accounting hard time, but it's vitally important, because this fellow feels money, and I appreciate the attention to detail, even if I occasionally change, but under your harness. And I, I will ask the Chair of the Committee, the Trustee Ripley, if you'd like to make any comments on that publicly at this time, and then we'll go to the payment.
Well, you said it all, Mr. President, I guess, based on the hard work that they did in paying you and pulling this together, I guess I can buy a little chewed in.
Not the budget, though.
This is our budget, this is funding money.
If, are there any questions for the Treasurer? There being none, thank you very, very much. Chair would like a motion to approve and block Agenda Items 8, A through C, A, approve the financial statements. As of February 28, 2018, A, B, pay bills in the amount of $190,185.07, as listed on the accounts payable warrant, A, dated April 3, 2018, and A, C, pay bills in the amount of $2,751.09, thank you, Lisa, as listed on the accounts payable warrant, B, dated April 3, 2018. May I have a motion in block? So moved by Trustee Ripley, thank you, may I please have a second?
Second.
By Trustee Perkins, thank you both, I will ask the clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Rigby?
Aye.
Trustee Perkins?
Yes.
Trustee Burke?
Yes.
Trustee Schaller?
Yes.
Trustee Thompson?
Yes.
President Richardson?
Yes. Agenda Item 9, it is the Administrator's report, and Chair recognizes Administrator Dalton.
Sure, I'm going to start with the budget presentation, and I know we talked about these items, the committee as a whole, but for our friends out in TV land, I'd like to give a summary. I am pleased to present you with the complete draft financial plan for the period of May 1st, 2018, to April 30th, 2019, also known as FY 2019. Our village staff, particularly the village Treasurer and village accountant, have worked very hard to ensure this budget is prepared to meet the operational objectives of our village board and the needs of our community. This is a balanced budget, it has a small surplus of about $56,000 projected at the end of the fiscal period. This budget will achieve for the fourth year in a row, a low tax levy to support core revenues viewed for our operations. The village board has adopted a service delivery structure which is highly reliant on contracted core services delivered from either other governmental agencies, including the Lake County Sheriff, the Village of Fox River Road, our water and sewer in our industrial, our business park, and the Cuba Township Road District, as well as multiple private contractors for many general services. This business model has allowed our village to mitigate the risks and costs associated with a larger public employee workforce, which is an important tool in containing the cost of local government, which we ask our residents and businesses to bear. The village has also been focused on encouraging business development, as well as business retention, which is evidenced by the work of the Economic Development Committee and the hiring of an economic development consultant. The purpose of this economic development focus is to broaden the taxpayer base within the community and provide attractive sales tax generating services for our residents, business community, and non-residential life. From an expense perspective, the costs associated with service delivery are relatively stable. One of the major achievements of the village is the ability to offer residential refuse collection, disposal, and recycling service without fees or charges to residents receiving curbside service, and this will be continued for the next fiscal year. In fact, with the proposed renegotiated waste management contract, the village will save over $118,000 during the next five years. Lake Barrington is unique amongst the villages to offer this service without additional fees, and I view this as a significant budget achievement in both town municipality, municipality budgeting and planning. Having a potential refuse fee for service option also provides the village with a cushion and defensive budget strategy should, at some point in the future, state revenue distributions to units of local government decrease or collapse in the future, so that, that's a very good option that we have. I also wanted to mention that we'll be undertaking five large capital projects in the FY 2018-19 budgets from our motorfield tax fund, the water and service, the water and sewer utility fund, and the impact fees. The first is the rehabilitation of the western portion of the streets of the Savannah subdivision, undertaken by a quality contractor and priced below the village engineer's project estimate. The current MFT fund balance of approximately $285,000 will cover the $240,000 cost of this project. It is anticipated that this work will be completed by the end of June, assuming that IDOT gives us the approval to move forward, so it should be measured in the next week or two. Three projects are anticipated to maintain and upgrade our water and sewer facilities. A high priority is to significantly upgrade the sanitary lift station operations by implementing a SCADA system. SCADA stands for Supervisory Control and Data Acquisition, which will allow remote control of valves and pumps, along with monitoring and processing of real-time data. The two iron removal filter tanks are scheduled to be drained, cleaned, and painted, as well as the painting of the water tower, which is carryover from last year's budget. The current water and sewer fund balance of approximately $1.3 million will cover the anticipated $310,000 cost for these two projects. The fifth project slated is the reconstruction of a portion of Old Barrington Road using $400,000 in school impact fees. Since Old Barrington Road is classified by IDOT as a major collector and is a school bus drop, these fees can be accessed... bus drop, these fees can be accessed to increase the payment integrity and strength. Staff is currently soliciting proposals for engineering design services for this project. So with that, our goal is to solicit final budget comments from the board by April 10, which is a week from now, at which point staff can prepare the final documentation for you to consider at the May 1st board meeting to adopt the FY 19 budget. If there are any questions, I would be happy to address them.
Questions for the administrator? And I'll simply observe, I was, when I was at the U.S. Conference of Mayors, and we're a small community, it's mostly big cities, medium-sized cities that attend, but there was a forum where elected officials from small communities like ours were asked, what is the core competence? What is the core competence of municipal government in your community? And contract management. We're very good at contract management because we have to be, because our entire budgetary and operational models is founded on contracting out. And so when I look at how we get this done, really the skill that I appreciate in the staff as well as, it's what John does with the fire and the police contracts, for example, what Suzie will do with the care and support on the roads district for the snowplow and the road repair and so forth. We are good and we have to always be very good at contract management. So your recognition of that is spot on, much appreciated, because it's the foundation of our success.
Well, and I would like to thank Attorney Bateman because he keeps us all on track with contracts. Much appreciated.
My pleasure. Further comments for the, questions for the administrator? Is there anything further to your report tonight?
Uh, no.
Okay, we can move to agenda item 10, the clerk's report.
The community garden this past year had a bit of an issue with weed overgrowth. So in trying to decide what to do about that, it was suggested that we solarize the garden, which is covering it up for the season and into the winter, yes. But we have enough interest in the garden again this year that we're going to solarize half of it and then use the other half, and then we'll flip flop next year, so that still works for people. So we're still determining exactly what we're going to do and the fees and that, but we'll be putting some information out on the website and in the newsletter, which will be coming out like mid-May on the gardens, if anyone's still interested, we will be doing that.
Questions for the village clerk? Thank you, that's appropriately received. We can move to agenda item 11, reports of the standing committees. 11A, branding and communications, I'm going to marry that with 11D because those are both my reports. Couple of things, the Barrington area chamber of commerce, the end of April, the 25th, will hold a breakfast event called the Public Town Hall Forum, it's their second annual. It has a variety of updates from a myriad of local taxing bodies, the library district, school district 220, the Barrington Countryside Fire Protection District, Barrington Hills Park District, the Barrington Park District, Barrington Township, Cuba Township, Harbor College, South Barrington Park District, just to name a few. The events at McRae Memorial Golf, North Coast Highway, there was a $35 charge for the breakfast and the registration for the event. And I want, you know, we did something in the last newsletter about where does the dollar come from, where does the dollar go, the village spending, and we're less than 5% of the tax bill between our operations, which are about 3%, and the open space bonds, which are about 2%. So we haven't raised residential property taxes in four years. So I think we, to the administrator's point a moment ago, have a great story to tell, that we're very aware that the need to always look with a sharp number two pencil on spending is an important thing. So I encourage interested residents or board members who are attentive to these matters to register, to attend, you can register online at www.barringtonchamber.com, or you can call 847-381-2525. The other item, a couple of other items, I spoke to one of our residents, Mr. Bill Pizzi, not long, a couple of days ago, last week, I guess. He is on the Barrington Park District or the Barrington Library reporting, and as you know, the village board here has sent a letter of support with regard to the realignment of Lake Surro, and he and I had a very pleasant conversation. That library board is still deliberating how to evaluate the request for that realignment. He, Bill, lives in the Harvard State School of Lake Barrington, and we had a very good conversation about why even residents far west of the railroad tracks still have an interest in seeing public safety meetings that way. He was, he was very gracious in that regard. I also want to point out that there was a couple of Daily Herald articles, and it goes to what we were talking about earlier. Carpentersville has a consultant to help with economic development, and while the consultant hasn't, they recently renewed the contract, even though there hasn't been a definable win for the consultant in terms of a new economic tenant, because they, to what trustee Burke was saying, recognize the runway is a lot longer in these kinds of sales than they are in others. The other thing is I've got a copy of the Daily Herald from March 10. The village of Barrington is putting forward a whole new rebranding effort at its own, and they've got an executive on the village staff who is in charge of that at a very good salary, far beyond anything we do with Ryan Bloughlin or with Kathleen Scott. So I think we're staying competitive in a way that makes sense for us, but certainly these efforts are ones that our neighbors certainly recognize as important as well. So I'm confident that we're on the right track for that. So those are my reports under 11A and 11D. And I'll move now to 11B, community relations, special events, and veterans of areas, trustee Thompson.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I'd like to start with the veterans of Lake Barrington Shores. They have a subsidiary organization called Military Speakers Bureau, which is used to provide speakers regarding various military topics. And April 12, they're going to be having one at 7:00 PM at the Lodge at the Shores of Lake Barrington Shores. The special event is Sheriff Mark Curran and Chief Jonathan Petrillo will discuss their Lake County Sheriff's Ambassadors Program. It's a veterans program for veterans homelessness and veterans in need and in crisis. And we're going to pass this press release rounds, everyone has a copy. We certainly invite everyone, we put the press release out to all the media, hoping that Barrington area residents will join us. And a special treat, of course, will be ending the evening with coffee and our great cake. So, next item is the wall mural. As you know, we've all had our wonderful photos taken, and we're in the process now of having the Barrington High School students do the logo as a mural on the wall. I'm meeting with them on April 11, about 12:30, here at the village hall, to discuss it, show them the wall, et cetera, and talk about it, and see what, how we proceed from there. I have one question about the logo, and that is that the brand image for Lake Barrington is the logo, and we shouldn't have the tagline on there as well, which is an oasis of gracious countryside living. I think that should be, because I notice right now it's not really included, for example, on the website. I think it needs to be included in everything we do.
I think that's a terrific idea.
And what I would like to do then is suggest a typeface for it, which I'll have them present.
That'd be great.
Thank you. Okay, let's see. Oh, as you all know, President Richardson and I have been working on dedicating a signage, dedicating the gazebo at Friar Farm to the Schofields. And we're in the process now, President Richardson has approved the final text for that, which I will now pass around, along with a copy of what it will look like and the cost of $678 plus installation, which would be roughly $150 to $160. Also pass around a piece of aluminum, which is what we're going to use. It will, obviously, our signage, our signage will not look like this, but this is the product that will be used to do our.
And I, I.
Excuse me, pardon me, and one other thing, please notice on the bottom of the sheet with the photos on of the signage, that it will be on a stick which will be angled at the top, so we don't have people putting things on it, or having birds and other various animals dropping things on it as well. So village administrator Karen Donald Lane is in the process of working with both sides of the Schofield family.
Right.
To arrange an appropriate tie, date and time, excuse me, for the dedication. She will also be working with Wild Asparagus regarding the reception. And one other thing I was thinking of the other day, I'd like to bring up for discussion is, this is really a wonderful opportunity for the village and the Schofields in general, and I just thought that perhaps we might want to consider some using as part of this, perhaps like a trio or something in the gazebo while we're doing this. So with your approval, I will look into that and see if we can find something.
Yeah, with that, I think that's a nice idea, Jim. Check it out and see if the thing succeeds.
Thank you. Okay, let's see. Farmers market, well, Mr. Wilson was here, it's on schedule, and we're looking forward to that big game, Jim. That's my report, Mr. President.
Other questions for trustee Thompson? Okay, there being none, 11C, economic development, trustee Burke.
Took a big step tonight with the approval of Scott Partners, working on consulting for us in the economic development. Thank you all for your overwhelming support on that. The timing could not be better as we've talked all along. We're excited to be holding, really delighted for all this, that it starts at here in my hand. Amen to this. Awesome, we'll talk about this, but very simply put, this thing, our job in working with Kathleen is going to be to take from this and to create what we call our economic development plan. This is not an economic development plan, it's a comp plan that feeds it. So we will come up with a very specific action plan that we will hold ourselves accountable to executing. That's all things very specifically about where, why, how, who's going to be doing what, focus areas, and focus on the internal processes as well. So there's more documentation to come that we'll hold ourselves accountable for. Obviously, the ultimate measure is in stimulating economic growth here, and that's what we will hold ourselves accountable for. And we're still, we're working on some measurements, trustee Rigby had some very interesting ideas on per capita, revenue growth, et cetera. So we definitely want to work on our measures and get all that, that will be part of our overall plan. And then we will immediately continue to be very opportunistic on those areas that have shown potential, whether those are open parcels of land, vacant parcels, vacant buildings, or places like Lake Barrington Commons, formerly Peterson Plaza, where we have opportunities. So we will focus immediately on those things that are crying out for our support, and then look a little bit longer term on continuing to attract businesses to the park. So look forward to some more meaningful updates, but we took a great step tonight, and I really appreciate everybody's support. Karen, I appreciate your online support on getting all this stuff done, and your partnership on the economic development side as well, so thank you for that. And many more positive updates to come from this date forward, thanks.
Questions for trustee Burke? Then we can move to 11E, finance, HR, and administration, trustee Rigby.
Thank you, Mr. President. No comment tonight, thank you.
Okay. 11F, trustee Mitchell is delayed by the terrible thunderstorms, his plane has been way delayed, so we wish you safe travels home. Does the administrator have anything to report on that on his behalf, or?
Uh, no.
Okay. 11G, public safety and gated communities, trustee Schaller.
Thank you, Sergeant Richardson. I guess we ought to start out with the fact that Deputy Stankowitz now is driving instead of a darts charger, a very large SUV. Would you like to describe your new vehicle very briefly or give us a tour?
It's very roomy, much better, a lot more room.
It is what, a Ford?
It is, it's Ford.
Room for what? More criminals like you, people like us.
Yeah, it's under the rides. If you guys want to go, if you're from the back, I'll drive you around the city.
Okay. Will this vehicle have Lake Barrington and North Barrington posted on it?
You know what, I was just, someone just said something to me about inadequate messengers, so they are aware, so I'll go after them again, because my neighbor didn't have either of the chips, so yeah, I'll have them now.
Please.
Sure. Got it.
Thank you. Thank you. The Barrington Countryside Fire Protection District over the weekend responded to a potential drowning, code two drowning, at 41 Hawthorne, Lake Barrington Hills. And I point that out not because they responded to it or because the patient that they were looking for wasn't at the scene, the command was terminated, but I find it interesting that they set up an NIMS command post, and a couple months ago, they wouldn't have a clue what they're talking about. It's called the National Incident Management System Unified Command Post. And that's part of the course, 100 course and 200 course that we're taking, and the big three, and then the 400. Here I am, in May. It's a national system of how you address major events. Now, this was a small event, and yet it involved departments from Barrington Countryside, Carpentersville, Cary, Fox River Grove, Long Grove, Palatine, and Wakanda. So it's a unified approach to how you respond. It could be something like this, a drowning, or it could be a tornado, or it could be a major terrorist activity. So how the system works is it could be huge, it could be large, you have someone in command, then they've got a whole system of deputies and various other things. But it's interesting, I use the term, as I said a couple months ago, I wouldn't have a clue what they meant by it. But it's part of, I think, what we need to do to prepare ourselves should that case arise, know our terminology, and have some type of a system in place utilizing the sheriff's department, utilizing Barrington Countryside Fire Protection District, using the Wakanda Fire District when these things arise. And the man who's in charge, the person who's in charge on a local aspect is our village president. He is the person that we look to for direction when it comes to that, so.
Oh, dear.
Among all your responsibilities, should that arise, you will get the phone call. Just out of the.
I've got to put that forward.
Yeah.
What's your number?
As far as tall grass, good month of tall grass in terms of sales, according to Kathleen Schwann, who's the community sales manager. They have two new-to-be-built contracts and a third pending a short contingency period. Hate to say that it is settled until it clears, you know how that goes, hoping to get a steady flow of permits and starts very soon, working to capitalize on this great spring market. So again, encouraging the tall grass is moving properties and lots and doing things. As I think I reported last month, the ant plate is turned over, the management, premier management, and I am trying to reach out to the community manager to meet with her and the president of the HLA in the near future. And as far as LBS, you know, things are happening in the lodge, and I'm happy to report, we have already had 22 sales year-to-date, and there are 15 more under contract this year, so it's off to a very good start. Unfortunately, the prices, average sale price is down 15%. But we had a good year, listen.
It's down, what?
It was $272,000 was the average sale in LBS last year. Right now, it's, but it's smaller units that are selling, so it's really hard to compare. But just, so we're off to a good start, things are good, the veterans are doing well, and if we can get rid of the snow and the grass, we'll even turn around. See, that's my report.
Questions for trustee Schaller? All right, 11H, roads and infrastructure, trustee Perkins, how goes your initiation?
Oh, let me see, you tell me here, can I answer? Thank you. Well, both the Iowa are the, Iowa, I say Iowa, I'm from Iowa. Illinois Department of Transportation and Lake County have road construction projects planned in the Lake Barrington area this summer. First off, Kelsey Road between Route 59 and 22. First off, Kelsey Road between Route 59 and 22 will be resurfaced in the fall. Northwest Highway between Hart Road and Lake Cook Road is scheduled for resurfacing with new pedestrian ramps starting in June and going through September. Rand Road between Miller and Route 176 will be, that'll begin in late spring. And if you can get more information on the respectable websites, type in IDOT construction or LC DOT construction on your browser, and then also on Miller Barrington website.
Thank you. Questions for Trustee Perkins?
Just a comment. You know, as you were talking about Kelsey being done, did you say fall?
Yes.
This fall?
In fall, yes.
Being cognizant of that as we're thinking about the Barrington Road work.
No, we plan to do it at the same time because we want to make everybody's life as miserable as we can.
You want everybody to... You want everybody to come to my neighborhood and... That's where it's going.
Currently, that's the projected timeframe.
Yeah.
And as the dates get closer, they'll be posting updates, so.
And Deputy Stankowitz will be out for the stuff. Drivers driving through neighborhoods.
No, he shouldn't be out there to give me a ticket. He's not out there, you won't. I'll be the guy who gets caught.
As long as we get our share of the village. Further comments or questions for Trustee Perkins? There is no agenda item 12 for old business tonight, so we can move to the ordinances under agenda item 13A is consideration of an ordinance amending Chapter 11. Title 1 of the Village of Lake Barrington Village Code, and amending the official comprehensive plan and official comprehensive plan map for the Village of Lake Barrington regarding approving and adopting the 2018 update of the Village of Lake Barrington Official Comprehensive Plan. I'd like the Administrator to do a little bit of a walkthrough on this, and then counsel with the Administrator to correct the process.
Sure. Well, you all know it's been a long process. In late 2015, the village contracted with our consultant to give assistance in preparing the updated comp plan. And the Plan Commission did a great job. They held seven public hearings, where they took input and tweaked our plan. And the village board gave input as well. And this comp plan, as Trustee Burke was saying, it's not an economic development plan, but it is somewhat of a roadmap of how we see our town being developed, what's important to us, our values. And it lays out a future land use map, a current land use map, and where it discusses in depth about our Pepper Park business area and the marketplace shops and how important it is and how important our residential housing market is. So it's a great place. It's the first place a developer typically goes to when they go into a town to say, hey, what is this town all about? It gives them a good idea of what it is about. So it is a document that's used to leave a living breathing document that can be updated from time to time, and it should be looked at by the Plan Commission every 18 years to make sure it's still on track. So with that...
What a great description. I really don't have anything to add other than, yeah, it's been a long time coming. And I know not only did the Plan Commission work very hard, Eric Rizzola worked very hard, Karen worked very hard, and Les Budonis, President Richardson worked very hard.
Karen and I actually spent a Sunday afternoon, we were going page by page for typos, grammar changes, alignment with board discussions. Well, I couldn't help, given that comment by each of you about their length of time. It took us longer to get this done than the gestation period of African elephants, which is 22 months. We could have had our own baby elephant. That substitutes remind me of a joke. What is the procedure now?
We should go through two pro forma motions to open a public hearing, close the public hearing.
Chair would like a motion to open a public hearing relative to the proposed new comprehensive plan and land use map for the Village of Lake Barrington. May I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So do.
By Trustee Schaller, thank you. May I please have a second?
Second.
By Trustee Rippey, thank you. Well, now, last but please call the roll.
Trustee Schaller? Trustee Rippey? Trustee Burke?
Yes.
Trustee Perkins?
Yes.
Trustee Thompson?
Yes.
President Richardson?
Yes.
Under the procedure set forth, witnesses are invited to come forward for purposes of being sworn. Chair seeing no one seeking such recognition, chair now invites comments from the board on the proposed new comprehensive plan, if any.
I guess the only question I have, because I haven't seen a full copy of this until tonight, what major changes have there been in recent weeks beyond what we saw a number of weeks ago, if any?
Are you checking out from the Plan Commission?
Well, the last time that this publication was given to us between then and now.
In paper form or, because you should have received an email version of it?
I never had. I don't remember.
No, I, John, I think there was significant formatting, grammatical wording changes, but there have been no significant policy changes. The big change, and you raised, the related question is equally valuable, and I appreciate you bringing it up. There has been a significant change from the prior plan. The new plan understands the current and the future circumstances of the village. The prior plan was written before the market crash. And so a lot of the work, especially with regard to the economic development portions in the south end of the village, that is, south of Kelsey Point and Pepper Road down to 14, and then along 14, and then up Pepper Road, back to Kelsey, that area that we would call the Business Park and the 14 corridor, that's where most of the change from the old land to the new plan is. The earlier versions were just...
There were typos?
Yeah, there was a lot of red ink and margins on this, but they were not substantive changes that I felt, or Karen felt required re-review by the Plan Commission or the board. They were grammatical wording, expression problems. I was very dissatisfied with the vendor's early performance on that. This is a document that has to be reviewed, and it was a bit too burlab at a community that deserves silk. So that was really the change. That's a great question. I appreciate you asking that. Are there further board comments on the proposed new comprehensive plan?
Just, no, just a comment again, just highly enough, thanking everyone from the Plan Commission all the way through. This is a labor of love. It's very exciting. It's a great document. There's a lot of really good information in there. You should take the time to read it. And like I said, this is going to be an awful lot of what we do as the economic development piece. It makes the job a lot easier, so thanks to everybody.
And it will be posted on our website as well.
I enjoy reading about the demographics of the...
I might say, just to kind of read, I think, I mentioned this before, is that because there was a considerable period of time before the Plan Commission recommendation and the board being prepared to adopt this, we're having another public hearing tonight that has been duly published. And that is reflected of the requirements of the statute that says if we don't act within, I think, 90 days from the Plan Commission recommendation, then on their recommendation, then we should have another public hearing, and that's why we're doing this.
And that goes, John, to your question. The delay was all about style and expression in the document more than it was the policy. The emphasis was on the wrong syllable. I even got General Rippey to laugh on that one. Getting the treasurer and the general to laugh is...
I had a basketball, you said, I was like, what did you say?
Later on, I'll do it in Spanish. Are there further comments from the board?
One other comment that was on page 21, just talking about retail market analysis and that whole piece, and talking about the difference between leakage, which is, you know, and the gap in your current market. And it's really exciting to realize that, you know, within a five-minute period, 5 to 15, we got anywhere from a $200 to $600 million gap, I mean, of services. And everything from motor vehicle parts and dealerships, general merchandising, food and beverage, gasoline. So there's a ton of, I mean, when you talk about marketing material, you talk about how, you know, attracting people, it's still a very underserved market. I think you heard Ms. Scott kind of allude to the fact that we're the opposite of the saturation. There's opportunity on a lot of fronts for people who want to develop business here. So this kind of stuff is really outstanding when you just even kid in some of the early parts of that.
Well, I'll build on that because you raise a very important point, and I will compliment the consultant for their work in this area in particular, because the data crunching was pretty good. Page 23, the retail gap analysis summary is very important because frankly, that's Kathleen Scott's roadmap. That's her roadmap. And if you look at those gap areas, a lot of them generate sales tax. And so in prioritizing, if it's the size of the opportunity, is the first variable multiplied by the sales tax retention. And so I think we can have a very good targeting effort for her provider of that because this really does set forth very nicely. I appreciate you bringing it up. Any further questions or comments on the plan? Then Chair would like a motion to close the public hearing related to the proposed new comprehensive plan and land use map for the Village of Lake Barrington. May I have a motion? By Trustee Schaller, thank you. A second, please.
Second.
By Trustee Rippey, thank you. Both gentlemen, clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Schaller?
Yes.
Trustee Rippey?
Yes.
Trustee Burke?
Yes.
Trustee Perkins?
Yes.
Trustee Thompson?
Yes.
President Richardson?
Yes, thank you. Chair would now like a motion to approve ordinance number 2018-0-7. Thank you. An ordinance to approve the official comprehensive plan for the Village of Lake Barrington dated April 3, 2018, and the official land use map with its part thereof, and to approve related amendments to Section 1-11-1 and 1-11-2 of the Village of Lake Barrington Municipal Code, which incorporates by reference said official plan and official map. May I have that motion, please?
So do.
By Trustee Burke, may I have a second? By Trustee Thompson, thank you. Both gentlemen, clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Burke?
Yes.
Trustee Thompson?
Yes.
Trustee Perkins?
Yes.
Trustee Rippey?
Aye.
Trustee Schaller?
Yes.
President Richardson?
Yes, thank you. 13B, consideration of ordinance approving and authorizing the execution of an exclusive municipal solid waste recycling and yard waste program with waste management. I'll ask the Administrator to set this one in force.
Sure. We currently have a five-year contract with Waste Management that expires at the end of September, and there's provision in the contract that we renegotiate it by the end of May by mutual agreement if we can do that. And it just, in recent months, I met with the executive director of SWACO and received a lot of good information from SWACO on what current contracts, what we should expect from current contracts. Waste Management had provided us with an alternative agreement consideration, and we didn't think there was enough benefits in that to proceed with. After further negotiations with Waste Management, they proposed a new five-year contract. And I've got to say, they really came through with this and provided additional benefits and cost savings to the village that we didn't have, very unlikely to get. We're all very excited about this. They provide excellent service. I think first and foremost for our residents and for us, you know, for us because we're paying that garbage bill and recycling bill, our residents don't pay that. But our monthly costs will go down from $17.56 a month per household to $17.20 this first year. We've also reduced the annual minimum increase from 2.5% to 2.25%, which doesn't sound like a lot, but when you have something in the high $400,000 as a service, it adds up quickly. They've also offered free unlimited leaf bag pickup during the entire month of November for our residents. So this is another, that's when a lot of the leaves come down and residents are cleaning up for the winter, so they'll get, they'll just have to put those stuff in the bag like they do now, but they won't have to buy a sticker for it. They're also offering one free bulk item pickup once a week versus once a year. So now if you have a big old couch or a chair, filing cabinet, something you want to get rid of, you just put it out, you know, one week and they'll take it away.
You don't have to come?
Don't have to come. Food scraps are now an option for residents. They put them out in a littered rigid container. Waste Management is starting to offer food scrap recycling, and so if residents are interested in that, they can provide their own container or get a Waste Management container and do that, and just put it out with their weekly garbage and recycling bags.
Does Waste Management provide food scrap containers for you, Steve?
No, they don't provide them. I think they're available for purchase.
Oh, and they will accept them?
But they will accept them. So you could have your own little garbage can out there with a rigid litter.
Is there a standard type of container? How do they know what it is?
Well, because normally you only have your toter, and then you have the bags for your leaves and things like that for your landscaping, and then you have another little container there. So I think a lot of public education and outreach would be needed for a lot of people to do this, but it's something that's starting to catch on and it's...
They presented that to us a couple of years back.
Yeah.
Right? And we're all kind of...
Yeah, there's, SWACO is...
Somebody wanted to comment on that.
Well, they're, we have Midwest composting near us, and they're the biggest user of it. So, yeah, so they're accepting it and using it. Waste Management is also offering us free port-alet and refuse services for the weekly farmer's market, which is awesome. And so that's from May to October that they needed, and also free port-alet services for Friar Farm for the entire year. Right now, we're paying for that. So...
Excuse me, say that again, please, about Friar Farm? Port-alets?
Yes, we have the port-alet out there now that we pay.
Yes.
Okay, they're going to provide free now.
Ooh.
The reduction in price and the addition of everything with a minimum price percent, that equates to over $180,000 for the next year. That's not even counting like what it's worth, you know, for the free bags in the month of November and things. The existing Christmas tree collection and special pickup services, if you have something like a, what do they call it, a white good, you can arrange with them. If you have to call, that still stays the same.
It's a special order.
It's a special, right. All the rolling cards stay the same. The stickers for landscape waste have gone up from $1.75 a sticker to $1.83 a sticker. We sell under 3,000 stickers a year, so we're recommending that we still sell the stickers at $1.75, and that would equate to about $240 a year in lost, air quotes, revenue. It's just easier than charging $1.83 or boosting it up to $2. So they're also offering a seasonal yard waste program for $74 a month. And basically what that is, if somebody has a lot of yard waste, it comes out, you know, if they have 40 bags during the year, pays for itself. So all in all, it's a wonderful improvement, and I think, well, you know, the trustees might be saying, hey, go out for bid or go negotiate some more. It really don't?
Are there questions for the Administrator?
No, I'm just a big bad boy to everybody.
That would be an atta girl.
I'm sorry. As soon as I said that...
At boost.
Yeah, at boost. But really, terrific.
You have to be commended of awesome.
It doesn't happen by accident. Chair would like a motion to pass ordinance number 2018-0-8. Thank you. An ordinance approving and authorizing the execution of an exclusive agreement for the collection and disposal of residential refuges and the collection and disposal of residential compostable yard waste and recyclable materials between Waste Management of Illinois Incorporated and the Village of Lake Barrington. May I have that motion?
So do.
By Trustee Schaller, seconded by Trustee Thompson, thank you. Both gentlemen, clerk, please call the roll. Vote, gentlemen, clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Shaller?
Yes.
Trustee Thompson?
Yes.
Trustee Burke?
Yes.
Trustee Perkins?
Yes.
Trustee Rippey?
Aye.
President Richardson?
Yes.
Agenda item 14A, Intergovernmental Boundary Agreement. Is this Mr. Bayman or Ms. Dalton Lane who did this?
So Village Administrator Dalton Lane was contacted by the administrator in North Barrington pointing out the fact that we had not, in fact, approved the most recent version of the boundary agreement. And in fact, we did it early on. And there were changes made by both Tower Lakes and by North Barrington subsequently. And, you know, I give a lot of credit to, well, Kathleen Leitner was the village president in Tower Lakes, and Julie Losinski was the village clerk there. They were the spearheading force. And it's apparent from... That Kathleen Leitner has been the spearheading force subsequently and brought it to our attention. And I do note that basically, I think, when the new version was brought to Chris Martin's attention in 2016, he may have just deferred it, waiting for the comprehensive plan to be adopted, which always seemed like it was around the corner. So it's entirely appropriate that we're approving the boundary agreement tonight, updating the reference with a new date as of April 3, 2018, for our comprehensive plan. And we're gonna mention to Kathleen Leitner, where I think that their comprehensive plan date needs to be updated as well, because we checked all the rest of them that are listed for the other villages. And North Barrington was correct, North Barrington was right, et cetera. So, yeah, I think this is a long time coming. And but thanks to Kathleen, all those people to bring it to fruition.
Are there questions for the council? All right, the chair would like a motion to approve Resolution Number 2018-R-8. Thank you. Approving and authorizing the execution of an intergovernmental jurisdictional boundary agreement. May I have the motion, please?
So moved.
By trustee Rippey, thank you. May I please have a second? By trustee Shaller, thank you. Both gentlemen. Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Rippey?
Aye.
Trustee Shaller?
Yes.
Trustee Burke?
Yes.
Trustee Perkins?
Yes.
Trustee Thompson?
Yes.
President Richardson?
Yes.
There is the agenda item 15 for new business. 16 is the second opportunity for the public to address the village board. I see no one seeking recognition. The only thing I have before we call for adjournment is, I know any of the New York chicks when they lived here. Their son got married last weekend. Lynn and I went to the wedding in Midland, Michigan. And this is a case where Lynn was the funny one, and I was the straight guy because I did it without realizing it. You know, the couple comes around to all the tables to visit the people. And I said, never go to bed in Manhattan. Lynn says, yes, stay up and fight. Serves me right. My wife and I were happy for 30 years, then we met. Chair would like a motion to adjourn. But um...
So moved.
By trustee Shaller, second?
Second.
By trustee Thompson, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Vote.